Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is now nine o'clock. I'd like to welcome the people of Guam and the nominee and members to testify on reference to Bill 218-34. The Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation now convenes this public hearing. Public hearing notices were given to the media. The first notice was on Tuesday, December 26th, and then on Friday, December 29th, and on Wednesday, January 3rd. And for the record, today is January 10th, and the time is now nine o'clock. The committee will hear and accept testimonies, both oral and written, on the following: The referral of appointment of Dr. Michelle M.S. Santos, ED, doctor, position community a large member, Guam Commission for Educator Certification. Term length is three years. And also on Bill Number 218-34, COR, as introduced by Theresa M. Terlay and Dennis Rodriguez Jr., Senator Dennis Rodriguez Jr., an act to amend Section 71, 202.2 of Chapter 7, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, amended Article 1, 3101.4 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to requiring the Department of Revenue and Taxation Motor Vehicle Division Driver's License and Identification Card Branch to submit copies of Veterans DD-214 forms to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs for the purpose of updating the Guam Veterans Registry. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Vice Speaker, Senator Theresa Terlay, ma'am, for joining me today for the public hearing. The general rules for public hearing: The conduct of this public hearing shall be as follows. Those testifying will be recognized in the order of signing up on the sign-in sheet. Written testimonies may be read. A lengthy testimony should be summarized to about five minutes. Written testimonies shall be submitted to the committee. Please provide our legislative staff with written testimony for photocopying. Testimonies should be confined to the substance or the nature of the nominee's appointment or of the bill. Persons will be allowed to present oral testimony only once. Once you are done, you may be asked to remain in the room for questions or for additional testimony, as may be desired by the members of the panel. When you speak, please make sure the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone, and you state your name for the record. We will now begin the hearing on Dr. Michelle Santos. Ms. Santos, could you please come forward, ma'am? And we'll begin with you, ma'am. Dr. Santos.
Thank you and good morning.
You want to testify on your behalf? Speak on your behalf.
Well, since no one is here to testify against me, I hope, gentlemen. Thank you for, first of all, accommodating the date change from January 3rd to January 10th. I was able to attend a conference on teacher recruitment and retention with other state directors of teachers for educator certification. So, I appreciate the nomination and believe that I can continue to serve the people of Guam in the capacity as a commission member for the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. My experience as an educator, and more importantly, my role as a community member, I believe, serves me well in ensuring that we have qualified teachers in our classroom. Additionally, I think we all have a role in ensuring that we elevate the profession of education and have qualified people in our classrooms to serve our students, to further the growth and expertise on Guam, if we want our students and children to stay here to move Guam forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. I'd like to also recognize Senator Jim Spardon also joined us, and I'd open up for any questions they may have for Dr. Santos. We'll start with the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much, Mrs. Santos, for being here. And I was very happy to see your packet that it was you that was being nominated to this commission. I know you have many years' experience in education and recently at the University of Guam in teaching our teachers. So, I very much appreciate also your efforts to expand service to the region, and commend you for that. And I don't know if my colleagues are aware that this candidate is also a very active member of the community, and she's actually represented Guam in sports events. I think she's a, I know she's a biker, I mean, biking, motorcycling, but I'm not sure. Are you a triathlete also? Yes, so she's very accomplished in many areas. But I just want to thank you for agreeing to serve on this board. This is the Guam Commission for Educator Certification. And as you said earlier, the ability, the legislature was looking for a way to ensure that the qualifications of the teachers in the classrooms can be where we know it should be, and that there's somebody who's keeping an eye on that and setting the standards. And you mentioned recruitment and retention, and thank you very much for that, because I think it's very important that we keep good teachers happy. So, I appreciate your recommendations on retention, if there's anything that the legislature can do. I know that, I think we've put a big burden on our teachers as it is, and they have, just because they are mostly nice people. They stick at it, and they do it for the sake of the kids, and so they have that in their hearts and their minds, and really sacrificed much to do that, including family time and lots of things. So, I thank you for helping them and helping us to help them. And I also want to point out, this board has another role that is maybe not so popular, because it is also supposed to be the board that provides for disciplinary proceedings for educators, and it's supposed to set the code of ethics for educators. And that's a kind of, I still think could be maybe more active part of the board. I think it's a little bit, the controversial part, aspect of serving on this board will always be that, so I know it's not strictly an easy board to serve on. And it's also supposed to set the continuing education requirements. And so, as we know, things are changing quite fast. The students know this, and we need our teachers to also be prepared to meet those challenges. So, I just want to thank you for your service, and I hope that if there's any issues that come up serving on this board that you feel we could help with, that you just bring that to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Senator Spardon, do you have any question for Dr. Santos?
I don't have a question. However, I do want to note for the public a couple of things, and correct me if I'm wrong. Actually, right now, you are the community representative. Is that true?
That's correct.
On the Board of Certification?
Yes, sir.
All right. And have you, what are the, I mean, you know, the good Vice Speaker has kind of enumerated some of the things in law that the board is responsible for. What are some of the challenges right now that you believe are before the board?
Well, there are three, basically. And one happens to be with the high need for teachers. I think there's a push to say, how can we get more teachers in the classroom? But our push is, how can we maintain the standards and get more teachers in the classroom? And I fear that, out of desperation, there may be a desire to reduce the standards, and nationally, that goes against the trend. And in order to elevate the profession, you know, teachers are humble people, and they will say, oh, but I'm no expert. But if you think about getting on an airplane, and you look to the pilot, and he says, oh, but I'm no expert, how scary that is. So, we need teachers to understand that we respect their position, we respect their educational level, we know that they're qualified to be there, and it's not something that just came by the wayside. So, that's one, that we don't want to reduce the standards. The other is looking at the ethics and the disciplinary component. We need to make sure that we don't, or that we're very clear between licensure and employment practices. And we cannot do the disciplinary actions that are required by the employer. Does that make sense? So, GMH would not look to the Health Board to discipline their employee for someone who has failed to do something in the workplace. If they choose to discipline, then the licensure board can take their action. And so, we just need to make sure that we are clear about the roles. I think Dr. Hendricks had indicated in her hearing that SOPs really are our next step. How do we put this in place and make it clear for everybody involved that this is the process that we go through? Because I think there is concern that maybe we're not fulfilling our role in terms of the ethics or the discipline, but really, we just need to make sure that we're clear about the roles relative to the certification license.
Thank you for that answer. The, I guess I do have questions, don't I? I am asking questions. Right now, I think there's, within the office of the certification, within the certification office, I believe there's like one or two employees. Is that correct?
There are three.
I'm sorry?
There are three now.
Oh, three, okay.
Yes, so we were just able to replace the administrative assistant.
Okay, okay, well, great. And that should be sufficient to be able to take care of the workload up there, do you believe?
Provided we get the support that we need when we need a hearing officer or a lawyer to advise, and I believe we've been working with the appropriate agencies to work that out.
All right. I appreciate that. I guess really, what I really wanted to say, and it wasn't a question in a question form, it was more for the general public, that within your, I'll call it the resume or the application, you have been awarded the Administrator of the Year Award back in 2009 for GCC, and then also nationally, you were given an exemplary leader award in 2009. And I say that, basically, for those who are watching, to really understand the qualifications that you bring, aside from your professional qualifications, but the awards that you received, and I believe how well-placed you are on this board. And so, you have my full support, Dr. Santos, and I look forward to your continued work and service to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Santos, I'd like to first, number one, thank you for accepting the reappointment to continue to serve. And, you know, I brought it up to several other members, that, you know, that if I'm correct, the Department of Education have actually asked that they may take over the certification. I said, well, you know, I was in the Board of Education when they separated, and I'm now on this side of the street, not at the board, and the board's asking for it, and I'm not going to support bringing you back to DOE, to start with. That's number one. Number two, and the reason why is because there's nothing wrong. I'm not going to try to fix something that's not broken, to start with. Number two, I'm happy that you said that you're not willing to support to lower the standards. Because if you remember, a while back, when I was on the board also, I questioned the ability to keep the teachers employed, even though they didn't pass the praxi, and the only reason for that was because they didn't have enough teachers, like you're saying your face today. I would just like to figure out, why isn't UOG working with the commission to make sure that maybe they should start the praxi test a lot earlier than just the junior year? Because sometimes they run out of time. They graduate, and they don't qualify to work at DOE. But at that same note, Dr. Santos, I'd be curious, and I've asked, like I said, I asked some of the board members, the commission members, if they want to actually toss it around and maybe present it to us, that maybe we should apply the certification island-wide. And the reason for that is because we have charter schools, we got private schools out there, and I know DODIA takes advantage of the certification you give DOE folks, and that's how they get people certified at DODIA. You know, that's just a weird way of doing it, but they're doing it. And if, and some folks have approached me about considering vouchers. Before we even consider vouchers for kids to leave DOE, we need to make sure first, everybody's certified. And the reason why I say that, because the level, the expertise that's demanded should be higher. If it's not equal to DOE, then there's something missing. Because, you know, on most of the private schools today, you're not required to be certified. You could be a mathematician, but you'll never pass the praxi English portion, and you can teach at private schools. But in DOE, you can't. You've got to pass both parts. Same thing, you may be great in English, but you'll never pass the math site.
Right.
And that's why the certification requirements exist. And, you know, I look forward to your continued support, and I look forward to more communication from your commission on how we can, in the committee, support the endeavors of the commission, because, you know, I'm not going to allow charter schools to take your support staff to help them. We'll find a way to help them, all right? Thank you, Dr. Santos. And if, do you have anything you want to comment?
No, thank you.
Yes, Dr., I mean, Senator Spardon, yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Thank you. Santos, over the holidays, somebody passed on a video, an online video, not locally, it was in the States, and basically, what it depicted was two sets of students, equally talented, and they were challenging each other to answer some questions. And at first, some questions were asked by a panel of teachers and professionals, and one group of students would answer that, or write it down, and so would the other group of students, right? And they both come up with the answers. And then they drew a curtain between the two teams, and the questions continued, and they got harder. The reason why they drew the curtain, because on one side, they gave one set of students computers, and on the other side, they didn't. In other words, they were just left to their own knowledge and intellect to answer the questions as they could, right off the top of their head. And of course, as the questions got harder, those with computers were able to kind of Google it or find the answer on the internet, and they answered it, while in the meantime, the other set of students were kind of trying to figure out in their head what was going on and whatnot. And the point, I guess, of that whole thing, at the very end, was that those who were not technologically savvy, right, were definitely at a disadvantage, or would definitely have to come up with a solution, but it would always come at a very much slower pace, whereas those who had the internet activity, right, were able to come up with solutions to the answers, to the questions. And so, I guess the question to you is, one, when we start taking a look and certifying these teachers, and I know you have to work with the board on this, the Board of Education and whatnot, how savvy are our teachers technologically? I mean, is there an opportunity for us to transition more into technology, right, to be able to give that advantage to our students, you know, as opposed to not? I mean, because we're still arguing about textbooks, right, as opposed to something more advanced? And again, the students who were not given, they had books in front of them, and they were flipping the pages, really, you know, looking through the table of contents, looking through the index, everything else, trying to find the solution or what the relevant information, where the relevant information may be. But like you said, within, you know, several seconds, those with computers already had it. So, the question to you is, how technologically savvy are our teachers, and, you know, do we anticipate getting into that next phase?
I can answer from my university hat perspective, if you would like that answer.
No, please do.
Okay. The University of Guam goes through CAPE accreditation for its, the Council for the Accreditation of Educator Preparation Program, which is CAPE. We go through that accreditation process for just the education programs. In that, we have to demonstrate how the students are meeting technology standards, and that is, it's actually a theme that's woven throughout all of the standards. So, the students that we bring in, how we're increasing their technology abilities, and how they're able to integrate it into instruction, into assessment, into daily use as a professional. So, that's woven throughout our program. In terms of how we, as a commission, assess that, that's not part of it. I was looking at a report this morning from the American Association for the Council of Teacher Education Programs, and I might be off on that, it's the AACTE, and their 2013 report indicated that there was an increase of technology education with teachers throughout all educator prep programs. So, I can guarantee that we are at the University of Guam, and hopefully, teachers who come to us with certificates already, and there is reciprocity between the other states, have those skills as well. The other issue would be, are the resources available to our students, and is the connectivity available to the students in the classrooms?
And I appreciate that. You're right, in terms of the resources. But again, to be able to change our mindset, we need to understand that. And so, I guess what I'm taking away from your answer is that because you are assisting our students at the University of Guam, the teacher, perhaps, the teachers who, the students who want to get into teaching, in terms of increasing their technological abilities, that they would, that hopefully, that we would hope that they would pass that on when they get to the classroom. But again, their challenge then would be to have the resources and the tools necessary to be able to utilize that. Is that kind of a fair interpretation of your answer?
That's a very fair interpretation.
Okay, and I appreciate that, because I think that we do need to start being more aggressive in those terms, you know, and stop talking and arguing about textbooks, but really get more into, you know, the technological side, in which they can access the information, and maybe even, you know, and go down that road. We've talked about it for years, but I think the time has come, and in fact, we're way past that time. But again, this is no reflection on you, but I do appreciate your input and your perspective on this. Thank you, Dr. Santos.
And it being that that was so noted, I would be looking forward to hearing something coming from the commission that they're going to start adding that on. Because computer world is here, it's going to be in the classroom, DOE's looking at that already, and I honestly believe that the certification mission should shut, getting on board on that, and start, you're doing it at UOG, share it with DOE and all the teachers. And that's what I'll be looking forward to, because I hate for a teacher to tell me, you know, I don't know how to do the computer and that. No, 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 no. It's 2018, now, come on. Let's get with the program, let's move forward. Everybody else is using computers, we'll stay on track. But then again, thank you, Dr. Santos, for your testimony, and my colleagues for their questions and their statements. And is there anyone, there's nobody else here to testify? So, you, well, you have my support, Dr. Santos, and you have the two of us, and you can expect that this committee report will be completed and ready for this session in January, for the floor. And there being none, the committee will conclude the confirmation hearing for Dr. Michelle M.S. Santos, EDD, Education Doctor. Check it out. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, and you have a nice day. We will now begin hearing testimonies on Bill Number 218-34. I would ask Mr. Jose San Agustin from the Guam Veterans Affairs, Mr. Bill Conlive, and Mr. Rodney Cruz to please come forward. And before we start your testimony, I would like to ask Senator Terlay, Vice Speaker, to please do her opening statement and whatever she wants to present before you start. Ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, and thank you also for the prompt hearing on this bill. And thank you to those who are present. I very much appreciate your being here and your testimony. I have a few slides with your permission, Mr. Chair, if I could just, I would just like to kind of show the impetus of this bill to everyone who's watching, and to make sure that we're just all on the same page as to what the intent is. So, if we could begin the slides, thanks. Just keep going. So, this, next, yes, thank you. So, this is just the title of the bill, and the bill is simply to require Department of Revenue Tax Motor Vehicle Division Driver's License and Identification Card Branch to submit copies of Veterans DD-214 forms to GVAO, the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. And this is for the purpose of updating the Guam Veterans Registry. Thank you. Next slide. Okay, so, my experience with this Veterans Registry is pretty much from, you know, the news, and I think the impetus of the bill really stems from being alarmed and seeing news reports that, you know, the Veterans Registry numbers are significantly different over different time periods. So, in 2014, with the help of many of the men who are present here today, the Guam Legislature established a Guam Veterans Registry pursuant to public law 32-101, and it mandated the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs to maintain a registry of veterans residing on Guam for two purposes. And those were to provide veterans and their families current information on benefits and activities, that this would be a way to outreach to those veterans. And the second purpose was to validate the veteran population on Guam, so that GVAO could pursue financial resources and support based on those numbers. And I think the bigger goal of all of this was so that the government of Guam in whole could pursue benefits, and every agency of the government could actually use those numbers to pursue additional services or to cater their services for what the actual needs of veterans are on Guam. Next slide, please. All right. So, in very recent news articles, it was stated that in 2014, the Guam Veterans Affairs Office reported 24,000 veterans residing on Guam. And this, I have come to find out, was based on the total number of DD-214 forms on file, and these are physical forms on file in the Veterans Affairs Office. In 2010, the census, the US Census, reported 8,041 veterans residing on Guam. And the latest FY 2016 census from Department of Veterans Affairs, their numbers reflect 9,933 veterans on Guam. So, I found that perplexing, that there was a 24,000 number, and now it, there's a closer to 9,000 or 8,000 number, and then the CIBOC numbers are only 3,000. And so, CIBOC is the community-based outpatient clinic that is up there in Agony Heights, and it's reporting an average of 3,000 veterans actively utilizing clinical services. All right, and I'm sure that my colleague, well, I have colleague, my, the chairman of this committee is a veteran himself, but I'm sure my colleagues have also heard, many, many veterans approach us and talk to us about CIBOC, and what we can do to improve services to them through CIBOC. And we've had many conversations with the Congresswoman's office, and so I know that you are all actively pursuing CIBOC services to be enhanced, and also just all services of the government of Guam. So, the data was inconsistent, and if we could go to the next slide? Yeah, these are just some of the recent newspaper articles. Now, if you look over the years, you're going to see hundreds of articles, I am sure, because this issue has been around since I've graduated from law school. I remember hearing almost the identical things, and so I know that establishing the Veterans Registry in 2014 and making it a mandate of the Veterans Affairs Office on Guam was hoping to solve some of these problems. Next slide. So, I want to give some credit to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. I think they've always been a little underfunded, and they've been working very hard, and I am aware that they have, and in the news, they've also reported that they've got, they've made recent efforts to boost the Veterans Registry on Guam, and they have, they're on an outreach, they go on an outreach in the villages, they have an online registry program that they are working on, or that they are currently utilizing, and so they have high hopes, and I'm sure that the director of the Veterans Affairs Office is going to talk more about that. We have a challenge, I think, and so I put down there on this slide, that there is one big challenge, and that is to, to somehow enhance veterans who may not, they have no need to register. And, and because they don't need any services of the federal Veterans Affairs Office, they don't need the services of CIBOC, they don't need the services of the Guam Veterans Office, they don't need the Guam Driver's License for veterans, and they don't need any of those things. They just choose not to utilize them. And I, I completely respect that. And, but I'm just trying to enhance, if we can, our ability to, to count them as part of our numbers because this will benefit those who are in need. Because some veterans might not be in need, but we do have veterans who are very much in need of services that are available. And if we can get those here on Guam and directly to those who are in need, I think that is the goal of all of this effort. So, so that is just one of the challenges that I know all of you, all of you and all the veterans organizations struggle with and all the mayors struggle with every day. All right. So, next slide. All right. This is the intent of the bill. And as I said, the bill is really intended to just boost the current efforts and to acknowledge the current efforts, but to boost them. Where the current law says, "All agencies of the government of Guam shall cooperate with the Veterans Office to enhance our registry," this is just simply to add the words, "They shall, they shall provide copies of DD-214s that are shown to them, to the Veterans Affairs Office to enhance the registry." So it's a simple change with hopefully, a big impact that will allow the Veterans Affairs Office to double-check their listing and to also enhance their listing by just mandating that this information from one government agency be transferred to another. So the next slide explains why we are focusing in this one bill on the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Now, there are three bills that I introduced at the same time, together with Senator Rodriguez. But so this one bill deals in particular with the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And it simply says that under the current program for where veterans may apply for driver's licenses with a waived fee, or they may apply for vehicle registration and waive the fees, that for the, when they apply for these programs, that the Department of Revenue and Taxation already looks at their, their veteran status and that they shall transfer that information to the Veterans Registry, just so that they can also have the same information. Okay. So Department of Motor Vehicles and Revenue and Tax, of course, they interact, I think, on a frequent basis. Vehicle registrations required every year. So that's an annual contact that they might have with veterans and with everybody on Guam. The licenses are renewed not every year, but periodically. So that's another check for the Veterans Registry to see how active these people are and whether they're still active. And at the veterans, I mean, at the motor vehicle, if you can see the second tab there, it, it shows the forms that currently by law, a veteran must show to the Department of Revenue Tax in order to avail it himself or herself of the benefit of the driver's license. So this is the report of transfer. And these are, I'm showing this to show that it's more than the DD-214s. And so it's been recommended to me that we look at expanding just DD-214s to possibly include some of these other identifications. So the current law states the following: Report of Transfer, DD Form 214, Military ID Card DD Form 2, DD Form 1173, DD Form 2765, or Common Access Card, CAC. This is what veterans must show to prove their status when they want to get the waived fees for motor, driver's licenses. Okay? Now, for motor vehicles, it's a little bit different. Motor vehicles, the law currently requires veterans to go to the Veterans Affairs Office, be certified by them, and then come up and, and present that certification to, to the Department of Revenue and Taxation. So of course, for Department of Revenue and Taxation, I think they prefer that, that they just simply deal with the certifications, but they have no issue. They've been dealing all along with these other identification cards for the, for the driver's licenses. And, and so they, I don't think they have a, an objection to that. I met with them and they didn't express an objection, but they did say that it was very, very convenient when, for the vehicle registrations that they are receiving, that they simply rely on certifications from the Veterans Affairs Office. But I think the goal of the legislature, when they allowed all these other identification cards and didn't require these people to go to the Veterans Affairs Office or anywhere else, is just to make it convenient. We are trying to enhance our ability to, to provide the service. And, and now I would like to enhance the ability to collect the data. All right. And so we've got some statistics from Department of Revenue and Taxation that says in 2017 alone, they processed 2,500 veterans license plates. And the License Division processed 233 new veteran driver's licenses and 1,041 renewals. All right. They also, we know it's the Department of Revenue and Taxation, they're taking care of all of our income taxes and, and many other things up there that require them to have a very sophisticated security system, trained personnel. And they've established protocol already for the handling and transfer of confidential information. And they've told me that once you have been registered in their system as a veteran, that that pretty much stays there forever. So they've also recently, under, since I've been in the legislature, we passed a law that allows them to collect data for the Guam Election Commission. And automatically, they will send this data, which is also sensitive, contains sensitive information of registered voters, to the Election Commission. And so they already have a system to do that in place as well. Now, I acknowledge that this bill will not resolve all the issues that our veteran population is faced with. And it's, it's not the intent to do that. That requires all of us to continue to work together. But I'm hoping that it's going to enhance the past efforts of many, many people to get this registry started, to make the registry, you know, to show that accurately and be usable so that we can get, and I'm sure everybody agrees with the, the principle that we are all going to try to get for our veterans, what, what we can, what they deserve, what they need. And I just find that, I, I believe that with this, the efforts, that we will be able to do that. Now, I met with the, the Veterans Affairs Director. We've also met with the Office of Technology and the Office of Technology. I am hoping with their help that we, we can get the 24,000 files that are at the Veterans Affairs Office put into a database so that they are either, they can then be updated, they can be usable, they can be, you know, accounted for. They can be double-checked with the information that comes in from the Department of Revenue Tax or anywhere else, and they can be, you know, verified versus the information that the director is currently obtaining from people who want to come in and that register manually, online, or in any other way, or through their village outreach. And so I think, I just want, I, I'm hoping that will then, then we won't have this, these news reports of, you know, it's such a mystery of the 24,000 veterans versus 10,000 veterans versus only 3,000 veterans. And my understanding that CIBOC is a whole different type of system, they are only counting those who are actively using their services, those who, and those services can only be used by those who are pursuing a service-related injury or illness. So very narrow portion of our, the veterans that we do have on Guam. So I would, yes, like to thank you for being here again and for your testimony, and I look forward to it and to working with all of you to pursue this. Situs Masu.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. I'd like to also recognize our Lizé Secretary, Senator Regina Lee, for joining us. I'd just like to comment a little bit, and maybe Mr. San Augustin can clarify it, but the forms used at Revenue and Tax is supposed to come from your office, correct? So they, basically, it's a certification that the person that has a DD-214, and, and we, we all acknowledge that I'm also a veteran, I have a DD-214, but it's not something I toss around easily. It's not something I will ever give the Election Commission because they have no business to know that I was in the service. I'd get no benefit from the Election Commission. I'd get no benefit pretty much from anybody else other than maybe University of Guam, maybe Revenue and Tax and other agencies, right? It's for employment. But as, as I'm listening to the presentation of the Vice Speaker, they talked about the DD-2, are we talking about the ID card? Is, is that what the DD-2 is? I just want to make clarification. I know you should be able to know that, Mr. San-
If I may, Mr. Chair, yes, the current law that allows for veterans to obtain vehicle registration and with a waived fee, that requires them to present a certification from the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. So that's what they are receiving for vehicle registrations. But they're also, there's also a benefit up at Department of Revenue Tax, passed by the legislature, that allows for waived fees for driver's licenses for vehicle, I mean, for veterans. And that is a different standard that they're using in the prior law of what can be presented to get that waived fee. And so for those, they are presenting their DD-214s and that whole list of the other identifications that I stated earlier.
Okay. The only reason why I'm asking that is because as all three of you are vets, on the very bottom part of the DD-214, it tells you of your, you've met the standards, the standard and be able to salute when you're not, after you retired as a veteran, right? You know, the bottom, it says, "If you were qualified to be a vet, you met the standards, you're not a reject of the United States Armed Forces," there's, there's a clause on the bottom. And on many occasions, certain benefits given to veterans is because you met the standards. You fulfill your service to the United States of America. I know that most of you agree with me, and it's at that bottom line. And I only worry that when, when somebody goes to Revenue and Tax and they present their ID card, when you present a current ID card, that doesn't mean you're living on Guam, it's that you just happen to be there today. Really? And you, you all three, I know, agree with that. You happen to be there today and you're on active duty today. That doesn't mean tomorrow you're being discharged dishonorably. That doesn't mean that your, 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 your service is ended. It just means you're active duty. And it makes it very, kind of worries me a little bit because then the database at Revenue and Tax will start increasing, like CIBOC, no? I go to CIBOC every two, three years. I don't go every year, even though I should. But the 3,000 members that go there are only people that require the service. I know for a fact, there's a lot of veterans, and most of you know them, that refuse to go to CIBOC because the line is forever, the appointment requirement is still too hard, they'd rather go to GRC, they go everywhere else, even to the Philippines. But I'm just concerned that when, and I, and I agree with this Vice Speaker on trying to load it, but I'd be very careful how much we want to load it, load on Revenue and Tax. The Election Commission cannot register somebody, even though that, that may be something that my colleagues would like to see, automatic registration. If I don't want to vote, cannot mandate me to vote because I, I got a driver's license or a registration. And, and, and the only reason why DRT, the only reason why the data at Revenue and Tax is being used elsewhere is for jury duty. That's mandated. Everybody's a US citizen, you must play a role in our government. But I just wanted to comment a little bit about that, but I'll allow all the questions and the testimony be presented. And describe, yes, yes, Madam Vice?
I would just like to also clarify, there's been some discussion public about whether this bill forces a veteran to do anything, and I want to clarify that. It absolutely does not force a veteran to disclose anything that he or she does not want to disclose. And I think that, that is, that's just a wrong interpretation. Because all it does is say already, if you, this expands on current law, that we have extended benefits. The government of Guam has extended benefits to certain veterans if they are willing to show that they are a veteran. And if they are willing to do that, and they are willing to show that to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, then the Department of Revenue and Taxation has been authorized to waive their fees. And we require all that information to be shown. I mean, the law required it. So this one bill is not what's requiring all that information to be shown. It is simply saying, from one government agency to another, your duty to cooperate is extended to, to transfer the information. And this is information that voluntarily given and that, of course, the Veterans Affairs Office has to itself be set up with security and, you know, ways to take care of confidentiality. Otherwise, I mean, no veteran would go to it. So I have full confidence that, that those things are in place at both of these agencies. And I'm using the example of the Election Commission because two agencies, again, with very high duty of confidentiality of personal information, are able to cooperate with each other, and they've been mandated by law to, to transfer information amongst each other. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Madam Vice. We will proceed now with the testimony of the three.
Honorable Vice Speaker Trelahi, good morning. Honorable Joe San Augustin. Honorable Secretary Regina Lee. And Honorable James S. Bowdon. Thank you for being here this morning. I also want to thank my two colleagues that are here with me this morning. To my left, Mr. Cruz. And to my right, Mr. Bill Kandiv. I am here this morning to testify in support of Bill 218, as introduced by this body in front of me. Vice Speaker, it's, it's almost like we've met a couple of times because your slide duplicates my testimony. But I would like to go ahead and take the opportunity to read my testimony and then elaborate from there. My name is Joe San Augustin, the Special Assistant to the Governor, Administrator for the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. I am here to testify in support of Bill 218-34, an act to amend relative to requiring the Department of Revenue and Taxation Motor Vehicle Division Driver's License and Identification Card Branch to submit copies of Veterans DD-214 forms to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office for the purpose of updating the Guam Veteran Registry. As of June 2017, the Guam Veterans Affairs Office has implemented the Veteran Registry as mandated by Public Law 32-101. The compliance started with village outreaches to better inform the veterans of the importance of the registry while providing other educational information such as benefits crucial to their knowledge and needs, both for the veteran and their family. To date, due to the outreach, there are over 495 registered veterans accounted for from the Village Outreach Initiative to include the Guam Army National Guard Annual Standdown that we took advantage of to be part of providing numbers of veterans that were part of that standdown. I must reiterate that this is just the beginning, in which more hard copy registration forms are yet to be inputted into our external database, DD-214s that are being scanned at our office, that are on files, in which our intent is to implement and include those information onto the external database that we are using presently. Understanding that the need to safeguard and protect this information, the Guam Veterans Affairs Office is collaborating with the Office of Technology to build or design a database that would allow clients or veterans to access the Guam Veterans Affairs website to register and that that information be stored automatically and securely- to register and that that information be stored automatically and securely on a secure database. The passing of this bill will complement the efforts of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office by providing much accurate information on numbers of veterans that reside on Guam. I made my testimony in writing very short because I am certain that we are going to elaborate more on what's taking place. I am hopeful that the 24,000 number is going to be a reality. And I say this because aside the files, the huge files that we have in our inventory, I continue to meet people out everywhere, in every setting, that acknowledge themselves to be veterans but have not registered. And this is just about every place that I go to. So it is very convincing that the number 24,000 is very realistic. The numbers that the Vice Speaker reported as of what the federal government have of shy of 10,000, those numbers are based on data that was compiled and are accessible to us through the federal database. In reviewing those numbers, I could almost ascertain that those numbers were arrived by numbers of folks, veterans that are only retirees and veterans that are presently on active duty. I possibly might be wrong. But with the initiative of this bill, this will assist us in arriving to a more accurate number of really truly what the true numbers of our veterans are here on Guam. Regardless of what the criticism might be with this bill, the significant part of it is that we have folks in the legislature that are taking active roles in assisting the agency and the veterans in finding ways to increase these numbers so that we could in fact justify the need of more services on Guam, more service providers, and more needs of funding so that we better provide a more substantial, better service to the veterans and their families because they do duly deserve that service. The outreaches that we've done thus far, which is DEDU and BARGADA, has been somewhat painful. I was hoping to see larger number of folks attend the outreach, but those are indicators of past issues that for some odd reason pushed our veterans away from having much confidence in our system. I could assure you that my testimony this morning of ensuring that the data is secured, that the data will be stored in a safe, permanent area, which is the Office of Technology, which is a governmental Guam database, I could assure you that the intent is to safely guard that information so that any administrator in the change of administration, that that data will not be lost, that it is permanently embedded at the Office of Technology. It would also be residing on an external hard drive that will be securely secured at my office so that the data is in fact permanently embedded and not lost. There are a lot of different things that the Guam Veterans Affairs Office continue to push forward to allow and invite those veterans that have lost faith in the system. And the outreach is one way of reaching out to them to let them know that, as you stated, Vice Speaker, even though they might not need the service, it is critical to take this opportunity to let them know that even if they do not need it now, they don't know whether they will need it in the future. As the Administrator for a year and a half with the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, it's been painful because we've had folks that have served diligently, folks with Silver Star, Bronze Star, and because they're so proud that they have served, all they wanted is a three to four month notice that they are stage four, or that is it. And that's painful. With this bill, it does mandate and it does ask other government agencies to provide the DD 214 so that it could assist my office in implementing those numbers. But if we have folks out there that are listening to this testimony, that are private companies, folks that are at home doing nothing but are veterans, that you take this opportunity to go online, GVA or Guam Veterans Affairs Office, or if not, visit my office and please register so that we could assist those veterans and their families that are truly are in need. That is all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Snobson. We will now hear, we'll save our questions until everybody is satisfied. We'll have Mr. Bill Condiv.
Talking about technology, I'm a Vietnam vet, and back then we don't have any of that technology. Anyway, thank you for allowing us to testify this morning on Bill 218. Senator Spaldon, Senator Trelawney, Senator Snobson, and Senator Lee, thank you so much for being here this morning. It is, I'll make a comment, I normally don't make a comment in public, but it is quite a shame that you have 15 senators all wanting to support the veterans and all the good stuff, but they're not here to hear what we have to say. And to me, that's extremely embarrassing. I did an article about, a month ago, after extensive research, we pump in, the veterans pump in over $150 million into this economy, and your budget is only about, what, $900 and some million dollars a year? Think about that. You pump over $150 million into this economy, our veterans, and we deserve a little bit of attention as far as getting things done. I am extremely proud and I'm extremely happy that this conversation has started. It is overdue, way, way overdue. I want to thank Senator Trelawney for stepping up to the plate and proposing Bill 217, 218, and 219. It is a start. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a lot of changes in the process, but it's a start to finally find out how many veterans do we have here in Guam. I do support, and from my team, the Guam US Air Force Veterans, I'm representing them today, we do support this bill. This is not only a Guam problem. This is a United States of America problem with the veterans. So we're not unique, but for a small island, we should be able to solve this problem. It has been going on for eons. I've been retired now for 26 years, 27 years now, and I've been monitoring this thing for the longest time, and it's time that we are doing something about it. On line six to line seven of 218, it is, "The number of veterans on the registry directly reflects the level of services and benefits afforded to the veterans by the US federal government." This is a misnomer. This is not correct. It is a misnomer. The registry is not a US sanctioned registry. The only thing that the Veterans Affairs recognize are sanctioned surveys. That you got to understand. The 8,000 and some folks that are in the system now are based on those 8,000 people registering themselves in the VA system from nowhere else. They registered themselves in the VA system. Therefore, the only thing that matters to the US government is the number of US veterans that are registered in the system. Other than that, nothing counts. Nothing. So you can register 20,000 people here. If those 20,000s are not mirrored in the US Veterans Affairs System, it does not count. You understand that? There are so many directors, we had a few town hall meetings we're conducting here, and they always say, the directors always say, get your numbers up by registering them in the US Veterans Affairs System. Now, there is a way to circumvent the system and to get an accurate count. If you look at the DD 2 Form 214, when a person is discharged, that person has an option where the DD Form 214 should go. Most of them would checkmark, send one to my state, which is the state, that's what Joe is receiving, those 20,000 214s. That's why he got those things. But there's a way. The 214s also go to the US Veterans Affairs Office. That is why anybody can pick up the phone and find out if he or she is a veteran or not, and the US will tell you, US Veterans Affairs will tell you, because they have it there. To verify a death or to report a death, it goes to US Veterans Affairs. So they have that. So you might want to take the, you might want to try and work with the US Department of Veterans Affairs, the Actuary Section, and request for a disk of all the Guam DD 214s to send to Guam. Take that disk and bump it off of what you have here. Now you have an accurate database. I think that's the way to go. And we cannot get any additional services just because you have 20,000 people in the registry. You're not going to get any services at all. You've got to have it in the US Veterans System. We have discussed a way of how to get this done. Go and Google Puerto Rico, the Puerto Rico Veterans Information, and it tells you all the data that is required to understand the veterans. And guess what? Because they took the time to do a survey almost every two years, three years, because they took the time, they are receiving a lot of services from the US government. They are receiving a lot of services. Go check them out. They have at least seven CBOCs in Puerto Rico. Google it and you'll see it. Why is that? I'm sure, I'll bet my check on it, I'm pretty sure that Puerto Rico is having the same problem we're having here, not being able to register their people by telling the veterans to go online and register. They're having the same problem. But there is a way, and I spoke to you about this recently, there is a way to get that data done. And we don't, using that system, we don't even ask for the individual's name or the individual's social security number or what. It is a survey that asks, and it doesn't ask for, to get 100%, but it's a survey that captures the information, and then that survey is transmitted to the US Veterans Affairs. And then they have that data. And what's the reason for that? To get all the data to get increased services? To look at, for an example, should we, should we give them more money for the cemetery? How many veterans are dying per war era? Or we haven't, you know, recently I found out that we, just by talking to a lot of veterans out there, we have a high degree of dementia. We have a high degree of dementia with Vietnam veterans and their spouses. But we don't have any service for that. Well, we've got to capture that data. We've got to capture that data, and from that, we perhaps work with nursing homes or bring other services in here so we can assist those veterans. I've talked to the Veterans Affairs folks who handle that, and they are seeing a lot of dementia with the Vietnam veterans. And by the way, just a month of December, if I'm not mistaken, we buried over 20, 25 spouses and veterans of the Vietnam era, mostly, in the month of December. So with that data, we can capture all these things, and the Department of Veterans Affairs can design something to capture and predict what services we need locally, at least to help better those services. So also, the US Department of Labor would have a copy of the DD Form 214. So working with them, getting a disk, bump it off of what we have here, that would circumvent all these issues and perhaps resolve some of the problems. The folks that are being seen at CBOC, the 3,000 folks, they are registered in the VA That's why they're receiving benefits. And by the way, you don't have to have a benefit, you don't have to have a disability to be seen at CBOC. You can be seen as a veteran. You may be able to pay a, go and get a copay copay for your services, but you can be seen. You don't have to be disabled to be seen up there. I am not, I think we've discussed this already, I'm not too sure that the Revenue and Tax Collect 214s, or perhaps we can suggest that there's a mandate somewhere along the line that requires them to do, and pick up 214s. However, I have a problem with the way it's written here. Like the Senator Snobson said, that's, 214s are a private matter. So therefore, I think that if we are to transmit 214s from any agency in Guam, it has to be transmitted electronically. There should be no other option but electronically. And perhaps we can work with a Bank of Guam and ensure that it is transferred electronically and secured like the credit cards. Because recently, the 214 have been hacked in the US Veterans Affairs. They've been hacked, maybe it's They've been hacked, maybe thirty-four years ago, the, the fourteen had been hacked and the social security for a lot of the veterans were hacked as well. So I recommend that we do electronically. And just, just, I don't want to delve into another area, but I will just, just a little bit. It does not matter if we capture all this data. It really doesn't matter. If we do not support the VA office, it does not matter. The VA office is struggling right now for manpower. So let's say we, we capture a lot of this and three hundred people go next week and try to get services from the VA office. There's no way. They only have one service officer now. How, how can, how can we do that? So we, we, we talk about veterans, we talk about thank you for your service. That's, that's common everywhere you go, thank you for your service. But you cannot provide me service at my own VA office because I don't have the manpower? It's, it's amazing. It is quite amazing. And that has been going on forever. Forever. along my testimony, I don't think I'm delving in another area. Give or set up a separate agency for the VA office. Make him, make him another agency, the NCO Veterans Affairs, and give him everything that they need, give him the manpower, just like you would another organization. Or you say, how, how can we fund them? We are, we're so short. Well, right now, you're giving them six hundred and some thousand dollars. I saw seven hundred thousand dollars, something like, something around that area. Well, how do we provide them extra money to fund the other areas in the event that a law is passed to give him, to have them, give them a standalone agency? Well, the twenty-five dollars, whatever that is given to Rev and Tax every year for car registration and all that, all those good stuff. Take ten dollars from that if a veterans, if a veteran registers his vehicle or her vehicle, take ten dollars from that and give it to the agency. I calculated this morning with, with the agency, with what they're getting and, and let's say fifteen thousand veterans times ten dollars, that's one point six million a year. That would give him the, the, enough money to function. But we've got to do something. Otherwise, we, we, we come back here next year again, do the same thing, over and over and over again. The other thing that is, that I will say is this. We have duplicative services here in Guam. I'm probably aware of that. We have the VA office and we have T-Gen. The only difference, the only difference, the only difference is this, the VA always buries our veterans and their spouses. That the only difference. T-Gen does everything also. They're well manned and they can get money just like that in the event that the client services increases, the demand increases, they can, they can get their money just like that. We can't do that. You might want to think about that as far as consolidation and, and so forth like that. I took my sister out there to test their system a couple of weeks ago, just to test it and see if, if the counselors are well trained. And, and you know what? They're well trained. How do I know that a counselor was well trained? The first thing that counselor did was, was relax my sister. That's a sign of a good counselor, to relax my sister and then, then talk to her, because she was very nervous. And once she relaxed, yeah, he relaxed her, then the counseling session only took fifteen minutes and she was able to apply for a benefit and off we went. Those are very important things for, for us. So you might want to look at that. I, I spoke to the, several years ago, I spoke to Representative, Representative in Congress, Boralio, about the same thing. And she was sure that as the conversation goes, there's going to be more interest. We've got to see, we've got to see progress. And hopefully someday, we would get a good accountability based on what we're trying to do here. But we can get it in another way, work with the US Department of Labor, work with the US Veterans Affairs and get a disk, bump it off, and you're done. And just lastly, we're talking about this survey, this survey that I was talking about, it's called the American Community Survey. It is done all over the world to capture all this information, just like what's being done in Puerto Rico. And they're getting all the services that they want. Thank you for allowing me to testify this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Conliffe. Mr. Cruz, Rodney Cruz, please.
Sure.
What is an afternoon? Good morning, Chairman and Senator Sinagastin, Madam Vice Speaker Talahe, Senator Espadon and Senator Lee. I am here on behalf of the Iraq Afghanistan Persian Gulf Veterans of Pacific and we are here in support of Bill Number Two Eighteen Thirty Four. As we, the Iraq Afghanistan Persian Gulf Veterans of Pacific, understand the intent of this bill is to assist the Guam Veterans Affairs Office in its duty to comply with Public Law Thirty-two One-O-One. As I sit here today, I am honored to, to be at this table along with leaders of various veteran organizations. And then I have continued to ask myself a specific question in that, that in regards to veterans, if nobody who will ask, if nobody who would do, and if nobody would advocate, then who will? And as I look around and I see at this table, the two gentlemen who sit with me, I only come to figure or think about what does the future lie ahead for my generation to come? And I thank you, Senator Talahe, for bringing this bill forward. As Mr. Condeff has said, it is a talking discussion and it's time we've, we got somewhere in regarding to the situation. Although I do seek that the bill and in future endeavors to a wish list, I welcome any of the senators of the legislature to look into more research and to take into consideration of the maximize of the use of the government in its entity as a whole and not as just one. But also in the future, that someday that this bill will be the diehard and foundation to something that we may one day see, free education for those who are a hundred percent disabled or hold a purple heart or significant medal. To include that at one, someday in the future, that this bill be the foundation to uphold the heart that the state of Guam would then issue a veteran's ID card for the island of Guam. In some states, they have their own state veteran's ID card for the use and purpose of one, whether it be a veteran population registry or for the benefits of the veteran outside of governing entities such as discounts and stuff, but for the very purpose of identification of veterans within the area of population. The amendment of Bill Two Eighteen Thirty Four is a direct reflection of our government that needs to be specific as to how and who within the public law or within the government in regards to Public Law Thirty-two One-O-One, addressed as government entities. In such, a bill is no less in this case strengthens the purpose of that Public Law Thirty-two One-O-One, which was added in subsection sixty-seven One-One Zero, the Guam Veterans Registry, to Chapter Sixty-seven Title Ten, GCA. The Veterans Registry is a slow process at hand with the current administrator who has taken up the duties of previous administrators who had reported conflicting numbers amongst the Department of Veterans Affairs. I can assure you that it is not an easy task as I have worked side by side and along with Mr. Sinagastin at several veteran events to include three events that I've hosted in the past year in correlating veterans to register. As we look at the, at the, at the title, all government of Guam entities as defined in Public Law Thirty-two One-O-One, we must ask ourselves, why isn't the Bureau Statistics and Plans have a role in obtaining and providing research on various veterans areas that make up the island veteran population to include the different categories within amongst the veterans of Guam? Yet the Bureau Statistics and Plans give a report every year on the Federal Military Contributions and Economic Impact Report and to include the Planning Information Program for the Guam Census on Guam. Doesn't the veteran imply to contribution and economic impact on the island? And why isn't the veteran not inclusive in these reports? Although if this one agency is to provide programs, ideas in correlating a census, why don't we choose that this one agency outside the GVAO to assist the GVAO in obtaining a data collection centric to the veteran population of our island of Guam? Because Guam is our home to one of the highest concentration of military veterans and has continued to be ranked as one of the highest per capita as it comes to enlistments and recruitment. I cannot grasp to why we still haven't had an actual population veteran count since the time the creation of the Veterans Affairs Office. Although, is it make it more fair that we continue to put the pressure and the responsibility on the Guam Veterans Affairs Office to continue our veterans' population? Or should we just go off the number given that was collected by the federal agency, the Department of Veterans Affairs? Who at that, at then of veterans who have registered for various benefits to include their own programs and entitlements under the federal program, the Department of Veterans Veterans in our community are fed up with having to repeatedly have to register every year and to, and to include various organizations that have continued to make note that of veterans' registry and yet we don't hold them accountable, nor do we define within the law that they should report such data of a veteran registry that was conducted amongst that organization. There are various veteran organizations, groups to include the college, the Guam Community College and the University of Guam that have a large number of veteran population. This is not a one agency problem. This is a whole government issue and that we should be working all together and all to complete a confine, a veterans' population registry. In some considerations, I have to ask that certain concerns may affect the veteran registry currently and moving forward. What really is the shortcomings and shortfalls of the agency to the veterans' registry in compliance? What is the budgeted cost that will be added to the already insufficient agency's budget? How specifically will any additional funds be allocated to support the needs of the straightening existing registry programming and staffing? As we heard from Mr. Condeff and Mr. Sinagastin, that the office is going through some difficult times now. There is a specific, is there a specific timeline given to produce such population numbers? How long are we going to go forward in continuing to come back to legislature or continuing to go to the media in regarding to what is our veteran population? At some point, we have to give a timeline. We have to give a deadline. We have to give a specifics as to what research and programs are available to conclude a conclusive data collection of a, of a population. Why limit to one specific agency when the veterans may have made contact in other agencies such as Tramor Land Trusts, Gura, and others amongst our government agencies, Public Health, GPD, Revenue Tax, the list goes on? So as we, as we strongly support the amendment of the bill, we ask those amongst us, veterans' leaders and veterans, that we should come forward and continue discussion, but most importantly, to comply with the law and also to support the real ideal of getting Guam's veteran population sooner than not later. I thank you all for your attention this morning. I am open to any questions and don't close to this.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. We will start with Senator Lee. Do you have any question for the gentlemen's up in front of us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I do want to thank all of you for your service in the past to our, our island and our country, but also your continued service as advocates for veterans. I really appreciate that you're here and taking the time to participate in this and it's really important for us in this process to hear from the people who are going to be most affected by measures like this. And I also want to thank the Vice Speaker for giving us this opportunity to discuss it. I think one of the questions that I had, I do think that one of the strengths of this bill is just the intent. And we know that in order to make effective policy, we really need to have better data and have additional research in order to get the resources that we need from the federal government. And I think that regularly updating the GVR is of utmost importance to all of us so we can know exactly who we're dealing with in the veteran population. I think that the ideas that have come forth from, from all of you in your testimonies this morning have been really great ideas. I think the, the thought about increasing innovation and making things more efficient are always good conversations to be had. But I think one of my questions to you is, I'm just having a little bit of difficulty wrapping my mind around the idea of the processing. So if you could maybe help me to better understand, in your mind, what would be the best way for us to move forward? So let's say I'm a veteran, I go to, to the DMV to renew my driver's license, what would be? I know, Mr. Condeff, you alluded to the idea that it has to be, things have to be online and I'm really grateful that the Vice Speaker has been working with the Office of Technology and Rev and Tax. I, I wish that a Rev and Tax representative was here today so we could ask additional questions on the mechanism behind it. Because I think the intent is great, but we want to make sure that the mechanism is going to be fruitful and that the information is going to be secure and that it goes to all of the places in our government where veterans might need services. So maybe, Mr. Sinagastin, if you could give me an idea of, in your mind, what would be the best kind of processing and something that's streamlined and easy for veterans to be able to, to avail of these services?
Thank you, Senator. So the way I see this is we want to lessen the burden of the, the veteran or their family member. So as to if they do not need to, to do any business down at my office, no need for them to go down there and get certification or verification of their DD two fourteen that it is a valid DD two fourteen. The DD two fourteen in itself should be valid. In saying this, I, I think the process thought in place is that the veteran can go directly to Revenue and Tax and do business there without having to come down to the VA office. I think it, it is a trial for say, that, let's give it a try. And as we move forward, we'll continue discussion between myself and DMV of how to make it a more friendly process for the veteran. But the idea is that they would hold a copy of the DD two fourteen and electronically forward it to my it to my office for implementation into the database. The one thing that probably is important for them to know at the Revenue Tax is that not all DD-214 will be honored for certain services. So, for example, you know, Senator San Augustine did mention that on the very bottom, and I want to see it, because I'm hoping that I'm one of those that they salute, but it doesn't have to be the very bottom, it's somewhat up on the top that determines the condition of discharge of that individual. If that individual was dishonorably discharged or discharged other than honorable, that individual is not entitled to certain benefits. So, that's important that they do not, that the folks at Revenue Tax don't make that mistake, and that's collaboration between my office and their office.
I guess my concern, and again, it's unfortunate that the Department of Revenue Tax isn't here, is I want to just make sure that we have the resources in place, we have the people at Revenue Tax who are able to kind of think about this new process, and how people will be better served efficiently, and maybe work with your office and the Office of Technology to make sure that all of those kinds of things happen, that we have a process from A to Z. It gets from, I mean, it seems, it would seem easy, like, you know, you just go there, and then somebody scans something and it's sent, but there are lots of different things that need to be taken into consideration when you're taking people's personal information. And so, I guess that's one of my concerns.
So, absolutely right. The sensitive information on there is the individual's social security number and their condition of discharge. Many of the folks, especially if it's a relative, that's providing them the service, that's also probably one of the reasons that we have probably a handful of supposedly are thought veteran, to be veterans, not coming forward, because they know for a fact that they're not entitled to any type of services. But I'm understanding, when Vice Speaker started our conversation earlier, that she did reach out to Revenue Tax. From my side of the House, I would continue to work with them to best make it easier for both agencies and other agencies, so that we could get this initiative moving forward with less pain, and just make it as simple as possible, but at the same time, protecting the individual's information.
Thank you very much, Mr. San Augustine. I guess on that note, is there currently a portal that would allow veterans to register through your office online?
Yes.
Okay, and can you walk us through, I mean, there's people who are watching on TV, and will maybe watch this, these proceedings later on YouTube, so if you could give us the link and kind of walk us through how that might happen?
Okay, so what they do is, they just go online and Google Guam Veterans Affairs Office, or specifically GVAO, Gulf Victor Alpha Oscar. That's Gulf Veterans Affairs Office, that would take them right into our website. On our website, they're gonna go to the link that says "Resources," they click "Resources," and on there, you'll automatically pop up the Veterans Registry Form, it's called a JOT form. On that form, it asks the veteran a series of simple questions, their name, last name, SSN, have they ever registered before, do they have a DD-214, their address, their phone numbers. On here too, we do encourage veterans that even if they had registered with our office many years ago, that they just re-register for the purpose of updating their information, such as address and phone numbers, okay?
Thank you very much. I also want to thank Mr. Cruz for bringing up the idea of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and that agency is under my oversight in my committee, so I'll certainly circle back with them. I know that they just released the most recent statistical yearbook, and so I wanted to take a look at, a better look at that, and see if there are any specific data points that are related to veterans, but I'll definitely follow up with them in a letter, and I'll copy you, and just see how we can better collaborate with the Bureau of Statistics and Plans to get additional information for veterans, and make sure that it's shared with the Veterans Affairs Office and all the other agencies that deal specifically with our veteran population. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Spalding?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, thank you for being here this morning. I think it's kind of telling, because what's really being said here, at least Mr. Cruz and Mr. Kundaliv both addressed it, or said it, is that at least this starts the conversation. So, to me, it's like, even though we're here for the specific purpose of a bill that would require Revenue Tax through their licensing procedures, or their car registration procedures to report to the Veterans of Guam Veterans Affairs Office, the information, again, the comment was made, the conversation needs to continue, or it needs to, at least we're at a starting point, this and that, this and that. So, this bill really is, just kind of opens the door, let's talk about a bunch of other things. And so, I'm gonna ask a few questions, and some of it, I might know the answer to already, some of it, maybe the answer is just, is gonna be new to me, because I'm ignorant on a lot of Veterans Affairs, I am not a veteran, and so I need to understand. And then, there's gonna be more philosophical question, and, but what was really telling to me, at least one of the things that was said, it was, Bill, you mentioned it, and you basically looked at the first, in Section 1, and said lines 6 through 9 really are not technically correct, they're not correct, right? And bottom line, if I may read it, the legislature finds that the established number of veterans on the registry directly influences the level of services and benefits afforded to Guam veterans by the US federal government. And then, you went on to elaborate, and you went on to say that, even if we do collect all this data, and we do get this whole registry down, and we account for everybody on our local registry, it means nothing in terms of what kind of support, increased support we can get from the federal government. The real key, according to you, and everybody's nodding their head right now, is that our veterans need to register in the US Veteran Affairs System to be able to qualify, or to be recognized, that number to be recognized in the federal government, for them to acknowledge that we need to get more services and resources to Guam. And so, I guess the broad question in my mind is, Mr. Cruz kind of spoke to it a little bit, but I guess the question is, shouldn't our efforts be in trying to get our veterans to register in the US system, as opposed to just getting them here? Now, I suppose this is gonna be a multiple-step process, because if we can recognize what we have here, then we can actually go out to them, and say, to all our veterans here, and say, "You need to register online into, or, you know, in the US system." Is that the vision here?
Well, unless you pay them $50,000 to register, they probably will. I mean, look, $20,000, supposedly 2014 counted, and only $8,000, some have registered in the VA system, that tells you something as far as getting registered. A lot of them don't care. For an example, retirees. I'm a retiree, and I really don't need C-BOK to get my services done. I don't, because I get my services done at Naval Hospital. But because I've walked the system, I rode on a C-135, all the way down there, and I walked the system where the veterans get seen at Tripler, I went to every section just to ensure that we're getting the services done. They're very happy of the services, but a lot of them won't do it. Retirees, number two. When you register, you go by categories, from category 1 to category 8. Category 7 and 8, the lowest category, if you exceed a certain amount of income, you still can register, you cannot get the free services, you have to go and do copay. Why would I have to do a copay if I have my own insurance? These are the challenges. Recently, I was diagnosed as 100% disabled person, so therefore, when I, knowing what the system will do for me, I went, I do now have an appointment to see C-BOK in next month. I want to get into the system, because once I get into the system, to get a VA, to get a VA appointment, for an example, to get a surgery, and even though I went, I'm going to Naval Hospital to get those, to register and get the free services. I walked the system, going to C-135, I asked for, to be an escort with someone with the Navy system, just for me to see how that works. If you go through the Navy system, you pay your own room, you pay your own food, and you ride on C-135, okay, C-135, that's a big difference.
I'm sorry, Bill.
So, therefore, that's a big difference, that's why people aren't registering, it's very difficult. We've been trying to have the veterans do it on their own to go through the system.
To the US system, or the local system?
To the US system.
To the US system.
That's why you have a very low, low, what, $8,000, $9,000, very low.
Right.
But, there is a way not to count exactly, because you can never get an accurate count, but through the American Community Survey, Google this, the American Community Survey, there is a veterans' survey, American Community Veterans Survey, that can be done, that is what Puerto Rico is doing right now. And, this survey is connected, and they did more research, to the Statistics and Plans section, they're connected. So, there are survey questions that are already made up. We take those survey questions, already made up, based on previous questions, survey questions, take those, tailor it to our liking, work with the Statistics and Plan, and get it certified, and get it done. There's another survey coming up in 2020, to survey all the veterans, that's just only around the corner. We can take those questions, bump it off with Statistics and Plans, and then have them work with the American Community Survey, with the Veterans Affairs Section. We can capture not the name of the individual, but we can capture all other information from about, I think, 20 questions.
Let me ask a question then, on something you just said.
I do have a set of questions.
You do not, as I said, if we fill out the survey, we won't come away with the name of the veteran?
No.
Right, because it doesn't ask for a name, it just basically asks for information, census information?
Right. And guess, there's a way to get, there's a way to capture that better at the local level, and I spoke to the Senator recently about that. One, mandate every Guam agency to fill out the questionnaire. Every director should know who their veterans are in their section, and make it mandatory for them to fill those question, the questionnaire out. No names, fill it out. Work with the private sector, the big private sector, or the employers, and ask the employers to find out who their veterans are, and fill their form out, no names.
And all we're getting is numbers at this point?
That is it, numbers. So, guess what? You're gonna capture, you're gonna capture a good number of veterans. You want to work with the federal government, and ask them if their employees, you work with Region 9, I mean, Joint Region up here, and ask Joint Region if they can allow their people, no names, no non-sensitivity, and just fill out this form. Take those things, you got the data, you got a good number, and you can extrapolate from all of that information, some good information, and guess what? Once you get that information, and it goes into the ACS, American Community Survey, Veterans Survey, from that, we can get more services based on the information that we have provided. You can get more services, that's why Puerto Rico's getting that, and that's why all those people in the US is getting that, because they're filling that survey out, not the survey about calling in and saying, "Hey, I'm a veteran," and registering it to the veteran system. It's through the American Community Survey, and I do have the questions also.
I appreciate that, Bill, but then now, it begs the question, right? Is the survey that we're talking about here, or at least the capture of all the information that this bill is proposing to do for the Guam Veterans Office, is it necessary? Because if we go down a different road, as basically proposed by Mr. Kundaliv, then perhaps the real data that should be collected would be the data from the survey, the, what do you call it, the American Community Survey, the questions from there. Because if we adopt a recommendation like yours, or if, you know, to try to get that data, so we can submit it to the federal government for more money, then we don't want to have to duplicate the service, right, by trying to figure out, how do we get the local veterans to come in and sign in, and fill out whatever information that the Guam Veterans Office might be contemplating in trying to capture? Mr. Cruz?
I think to answer to one of your questions, what is the purpose of the whole registry? And I think in entirety of the Public Bill 32-101, I think it was for the purpose of the state to have a record to utilize for its purposes, conducting businesses with the federal government. Now, you are correct, and Mr. Kundaliv is correct about, even regardless of the number we do have, it don't make a difference. Now, we can use that number to, an argument, to say that our number, which is higher than the federal government's number, that we demand more services to our veterans on Guam, meaning a bigger clinic, more opportunities for treatment and women veterans programs, so on, so on, so on. So, it gives us a baseline to go to the federal government and say, "Look here, you're short funding us based on the number we have registered on the island of Guam." Now, the problem with this is that our number is contradicting, conflicting, inaccurate, and it's way less than what the current population that has right now, which is the 9,900. And so, we cannot, I think, as a state, continue to argue to the Veterans Affairs and point that our veterans are not being served fairly across the board. It is our due diligence as a state, as an organization, as a government, to capture that number, first and foremost. Now, it's good that the federal government has a number. Do I believe that's an accurate number of veteran population in Guam, the 9,000, so? I don't think so. I think it's fairly more than that, I think it's roughly about 15,000. And I say that because Guam is very unique, and when we talk about veteran population, we got to look at the atmosphere and the environment that's on the island. What is the quality of service for veterans? Now, we have an inadequate, understaffed, constantly changing directors of the VA healthcare, then we're not gonna have veterans who may want to stay on Guam longer than what they impose to. So, now, we have a fluction of veterans who are constantly leaving island, going to the mainland for treatment and purposes, relocating, after they get pretty much well-treated and settled, then they return back to Guam. Again, that number is constantly changing, day in, day out. We have the largest Pacific base on here. There are veterans, but we can't count them as located veterans here, because they're on active duty and they leave. But what we can count is, what about our National Guard? But what we can count is, what about our National Guard and Reserve? Automatically, that gives us a number roughly around five thousand or plus or minus. So that's close enough to the nine thousand. Now, let's talk about those who are not National Guard and Reserve, and who are out, not, or out of the service. What is that number? Then we look at what Bill, Mr. Bill Kundaliv talked about, the veterans on Guam. What is the current membership and veterans retirees on Guam hold? That's around, I, I cannot say what the specific, maybe five hundred plus. But the purpose of having a state number, and purpose of, uh, public law, thirty-two one oh one, and, and intentions of this bill, is to accurately say that the state of Guam can produce to the federal government an actual number, or a number, that can come to the table, and when we negotiate, negotiate services to treat veterans who are cancer, diabetes, post-traumatic stress, Agent Orange exposure, and the list goes on.
Mr. Cruz, I really appreciate what you're saying, but again, back to, to, to that particular issue, then, um, if what Mr. Kundaliv was saying, you agree to, right, that the only number really is a number that's in the federal system, uh, then even if we collect our own data, it needs to still be verified or at least entered into the federal system. Am I wrong?
No, you, you, you're right, and that's why I bring up the Bureau Statistics. An agency that combines data collection for the census of Guam, that puts together a program on how. Now, if this one agency can do a job, um, that is, that is programmed to do this job of collection data, information, and, and produce a report, which I believe this agency can then turn around and apply for a federal grant through the Department of Veterans Affairs for Veterans Registry, this one standalone agency being that will collect this, will do everything it needs to do, send out surveys, um, on a quarterly basis to the address of veterans, um, using the support of the office technology. We have all these channels that we see in the government channels, why can't we have a commercial saying, hey, are you a veteran? Have you signed up today? We are not maximizing the efforts that we have within our government to push out the demand that we, and, and I have to ask myself, is it important that we have a veteran registry? And how much does that mean? And yes, it, it answers to your question, because then we, then we take in, we look into the number effect, and then we have to ask us, putting aside the emotional effects, because when it talks about veteran population and veterans, I can almost guarantee you that the veterans will be almost upset because they're tired of being talked about, being used, being put in the forefront in the papers and regarding to numbers. You bring up numbers, and they're tired of hearing numbers. Everything's about numbers. I can't get in because this number, the thing, this number thing. So, I mean, to answer to your question, Senator, you are correct, and I think when I refer back to a recommendation and utilizing, and I say that's why we have to use the maximize of our government, and I think, to answer your question, I think that would bring some kind of solution that will work intertwined and provide a report, provide it to that census, or that survey, or that community survey, so that we're, we're all on the same page.
I, I, no, I really appreciate this conversation. Like I said, I'm ignorant on, on a lot of these issues, and you're educating me, and so really to try, and I, I know we had some conversations in the past, Bill, right, but again, for somebody on the outside to really try to understand the intricacies of, of Veterans Affairs, it, it takes more than just a couple side conversations. It really does take a good question and answer, uh, period, like, like this. But, Mr. Cruz, can I just ask you then, right? Have, have you heard of that American Community Survey?
I haven't heard of the American Community Survey. I've received a survey.
Okay, and yes, you have seen it. Now, is that a proper survey, or the questions on that proper to be able to use to gather the data that we need for the Guam Veterans Office as well?
The questions are properly managed in, on the survey itself. Now, I would say that there, there are many surveys that come through you, come to you if your veteran is registered with the federal, federal agency, the Department of Veterans Affairs. I've gotten surveys from the Veterans Affairs Health Site Program. I have got a survey from the Benefit Side of the Program. How's our benefits doing? Do you need to, you know, the questions are there. Now, I think that's a good question to ask to the Department of Affairs Excellence Community Center, which combines these statistics and this data information in order for them to even give us this number, nine thousand. So how did you get your number? And how accurate is that number? And so even in, in the sense that we're asking the same questions on a local base, it's something that we should also work on the counterpart of the federal government as to how, how is this survey sufficiently giving you accurate information to, for a data collection? And, and that's a lot of things that's, I know it's above my head, that I don't see how it's, I, I've only filled out the questionnaire, you know, are you a veteran? Yes. Did you serve in an era? What, what era? Was it Iraq, Gaza, and Vietnam? Yes. Do you have any disability? Yes. Blah, 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 nah. And then mail it back. But I then I gotta, I gotta ask myself, do all veterans fill out that survey? Because when I get, I call junk mail in the mailbox, I just throw it away. Unless it says it's a bill, then I have read it. But most of the time, those end up in the trash, and again, it's at the fault of not all veterans, but some veterans who, who, who don't really pay attention about the intention of the mail survey. And so like we talk about technology, why aren't surveys being sent out through email or through, through various ways of technology? And so there's, there's just a lot of, the question really opens up a broader area that we, we cannot be one specific to, because then it kind of has ties into other areas of the veteran population. And when we talk about surveys, there's surveys for everything that we want to create, and the question is, who handles that survey? And where does that number then, you know, regulate to? And that's why Mr. Bill Kundaliv talks about, it, it is a survey that is, that is tracking, therefore, and that, and that's why we want to ask, how do we, how can we get access to that?
Okay.
And, and, and if we can, can we use it for the purpose of public law one oh one, you know, thirty-two dash one oh one?
Right. No, and, and again, I really appreciate this conversation, because when we go back to this specific bill, right, it requires that rev and tax, uh, transmit, is it the DD two one four, is that what it's called?
That's correct, two one four.
And, and for my enlightenment, that DD two one four is what?
It's a document, and pretty much, to me, the way I see it, it's, it's the birth certificate of a veteran. So when the veteran has entered service and completed a amount of time, the, the service member is presented of an enlistment document of, of service of the Department of Defense, whether it be Army, Navy, Marine.
Okay, so that's issued by the?
Department of Defense.
The Department of Defense upon exit. And, but this is personal information and private information according to the testimony this morning, and it's at, it's held at rev and tax, and the, the bill calls for the transmission of this private, personal information then to be housed over at, or transmitted to Guam Veterans Affairs.
That's correct.
Right? Now, when that form, the D, DD two one four, is filled out, on that form, does it have a question about where you will be residing?
Now, on the actual DD two fourteen, which is not filled out by the service member themselves, it's actually filled out by the Office of Department of Affairs that process these forms. Now, on the form, it, it has every information, and demographic, um, date of birth, social security, rank, service, medals, ribbons. Now, on the section, and the bottom, I believe, was section seven, uh, box seven, it states that your returning home of address. And what happens in, in the sense of a DD two fourteen's lifespan, is that there are, I believe, four copies, uh, one.
Six.
One of the copies goes to the state.
Mr. Cruz, let me just, let me just educate Senator Spalding. On the DD two fourteen, it's called a home of record. Home of record is where, where you started, and where you want to, your doc, your DD two fourteen to go back to. That's all it is, and it's also stated on the document, it's not to be used for identification proof. It's just to, it's, it's like receiving a certificate or diploma. That's what it is. A certificate that you've served the United States government, but.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chair. And the reason why I'm going down this, this line of questioning is because if at the beginning, or after, after the, at the end of service, and they're saying, okay, after this, I'm going back to Guam, but then as was mentioned by the panel, by you, right, some of them will come back here, realizes that the services for veterans is not up to par with that that can receive in the states, and they move out. And so that information, even if we transmit it over to the Veterans Affairs Office, may not be relevant, because they may have already made the decision that after coming in here and seeing what kind of services they don't get, then decide, well, I think I need to leave.
Yeah, and that's very common, because in a process of military and transition of our process, the veteran, or the service member has the opportunity to change his home of record, where he wants to go, shipping household goods. Now, in the sense of the, of the DD two fourteen itself, a copy of that goes to the state Veteran Affairs already. It's mailed, it is mailed by the Department of Defense, Department of Army, Human Resources, and all the service members who are getting out at that time, whose home of record is Guam, that is compiled in an envelope, and it transition over to the Guam Veteran Affairs already, where he then can, a process now. What is the likelihood of that vet, a service member actually coming back to Guam even though his home of record is Guam? We don't know. Sometimes they want to stay in the mainland, sometimes they come later on to mainland, but it doesn't mean when that DD two fourteen lands at his office, that that service member is physically on Guam.
Right.
So the whole purpose of doing the registry is to physically account for the, the, the veterans who are on island at the time of the registry, uh, for that purpose. So the DD two fourteen is no less a document that's, that provides verification of service for, of the veteran.
Okay, well, and again, I know that everybody supports, yes, Mr. Kundaliv.
Uh, you know, um, I realize that, um, a lot of our veterans move back to the states to get better services. It's not going to make a big dent as far as the numbers or exit in Guam. It's not going to make a big dent. Of course, it's going to be a small, some dent, that's, we, we'll, we'll never have an accurate count. So fifty leaves the island, that's not going to make a dent of the twenty thousand.
I guess, and, and please, like I said, please don't get upset for this line of questioning. I'm just.
But I'm just wanting to make that point.
Right.
That on, on big numbers, there's always numbers that are falling off, not only, not only Veterans Affairs, but you name data, numbers, there's always going to be something that fall off on the side because of certain reasons. So I'm, I'm not being upset, I'm just saying it's not going to make a big dent.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that, but I guess the point that I'm trying to get to at here, right, is that the process right now is trying to get as much data to the Guam Veterans Affairs, just to see what kind of numbers we do have. And, and, but according to the testimony today, that really examples like Puerto Rico, they were able to derive their numbers just from filling out this American Community Survey. And on top of that, really, the service, I mean, this is just another add-on that was testified to today, that the services from the Veterans Affairs don't really kick in to any individual until they register onto the US, um, information site, right, the US Veterans Information Site, Bill.
So therefore, because they're having issues register, not only Guam, but all over, getting veterans register, that's why this ACS is so important. It doesn't ask for numbers. The American Community Survey, they, they survey the state, the whole nine yards, check, check out Puerto Rico. They don't put numbers in there, but then, they don't put names, and they don't have to register in the VA system, but because of the survey, they take the survey and give it to the VA. So therefore, the VA would have a substantial, almost accurate number.
A number.
For a certain state.
Right.
And based on those numbers, it can provide us better services.
Oh, as, as a general, they, they will then take a look at those numbers and say, okay, Guam has really twenty thousand veterans just because of this survey. But those twenty thousand then don't necessarily receive the services until they go into the, into the US Veterans, uh, uh, site to, to put in their information? Okay, so it's a multi-level process to be able to get there, is what you're saying? So there may be several different things. And I appreciate, like I said, it's a matter of understanding. The last question, I'm, forgive me, Mr. Chairman, just one more, because this is, um, actually, I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll concede my time right now, and then have, uh, the, the author ask her questions, or you, Mr. Chairman, and then I can always come back to anything that has not been asked.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Madam Vice, the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you.
I give you the floor.
Thank you again, um, very much, Mr. Kundaliv, uh, Mr. Cruz, uh, Mr. St. Augustine, I, I very much appreciate you being here today, your input today, your ability to answer all the questions, and, and your ability and your willingness to meet with me and educate me, and your patience with us, uh, in our, you know, um, uh, lack of information, I would have to say, and I'm going to be the first one to admit that when I put the bill in, I pretty much relied on the media and what the media said, and the media said straight out, veterans, the registry numbers affect what we are going to be able to obtain for our veterans, and I pretty much put that straight into the bill. But I have learned a lot in working with all of you on this bill, and I, I was trying to make that very clear in that PowerPoint, but I, there's a few things I want to just reemphasize. One is, the bill in front of us today is not debating whether to continue with the registry or not. It's absolutely amending something else, just how we can put more information into the registry. I don't want to be distracted by a debate as to whether to continue with the registry or not. I think that's been debated. I think there are, uh, we haven't even seen or imagined the full potential of a accurate registry for the government of Guam, as you say, for this state of the government of Guam to act on behalf of, of the people of Guam. And I think those, you know, might be beyond us at this moment, but I think it was vision to say, let's do our own state registry. And so I, I don't want, I'm hoping our discussion never goes that way, that we are going to debate the benefits of actual state registry. But I did learn from the Congresswoman's Office straight off that the numbers in the state registry will not affect what we get at Seabok, because, and that's exactly what Mr. Kundaliv says, and it's true. It's, the, the people registered to the Veterans Administration are going to receive, they are applying for Veterans Administration benefits. So that's, that's something that of course we, we could use our registry, and it's one of the stated purposes in the registry law, to use it, claims that, that are being made by our veterans, and, um, I think we've had some very excellent people to assist veterans in, in making their claims, but I feel like if we knew, um, what remaining issues are out there, or claims that could be made, that we could bring in the expertise for that in, for a particular time period and take care of those, right? For example, you used the example of dementia, that we are seeing a lot of dementia. Of course, the, when I talked to the Congresswoman's Office, they said Seabok, I think, uh, number one issue, there's PTSD. And, um, so those kinds of things, I mean, those are data that government of Guam can also use, and you described it perfectly. It is for every agency on Guam to be able to say, we've got women, not just veterans, but we've got women veterans, this many, right? Or we've got different types of information that, like I said, I think we haven't even imagined yet what we could actually do with that type of information to get the services that they need. If, and, and of course, it, it, we're all going to have to work very hard together to, to focus on what those will be, and we look to the states to see what they have done. And so, yeah, I wanted to share with you, so I first talked to the Congresswoman's Office, because my, the, the first thought I had was, why are we chasing our veterans down, especially if they don't want to be chased down, right, to register? And why is that our duty to do that? And why, why do we make them feel like, you know, harassed sometimes, just that we want them, you know, we want to know who they are? If they don't need services? If they don't need services, they don't want to be registered as a veteran. So I asked the Congresswoman's Office, and I met with her staff, and, and wanted to know, why can't we get this information instead from the federal government? Why couldn't it be the Office of Veterans Affairs, exactly like you described, to transmit that information? And they do. So they do transmit the numbers that they have registered to, who are applying for benefits, right? And we, and we've got a subset of that, those who are actively registered and applying for the CIBOC in particular, right? And so that's one avenue, that we've got the numbers. We don't get necessarily any data, but we get the number, I mean, just that. And then we get, and then I, and then, you know, it does take a look, we, we have to examine the DD-214, because I agree with Senator Espada on that, there, you know, this is, this is what we're talking about in this one bill. And so the DD-14 has several areas. One area is home of record, right? And so I thought, why couldn't we just learn from the Department of Defense, who fills this out for every person who's being released or discharged from active duty? How many people put Guam as a home of record? Why couldn't we just get that number at least? And so that's another thing that I am following up with the Congresswoman, why, why can't we just get that? That, that's another number to use, and I'm not sure what for yet, but I just, I know that with all of you, you can be creative and think of, what does that show us versus, yeah, the numbers that we have in our? We also get numbers from the census data, and so I put those numbers up. Now, our census data is about 1,000 off from the Veterans Affairs number. So our last census was done in 2010. Okay, but back to the DD-214. So there's another part on the DD-214 where it says, member requests copy be sent to blank Office of State, Office of Veterans Affairs. And that's where you're supposed to put your state. And this is how our Guam Veterans Affairs Office receives and has this 24,000 DD-214s in front of it, or in its storage. It's because people have marked this, and it's optional, it's up to them whether to mark it or not, and whether to put Guam or not, right? So because they put Guam, we have received them. And there's another question that says, member requests copy be sent to Central Office of the Department of Veterans Affairs. And so, surprising to me, that was optional. So that's another, it's another issue, what, why both of you, your, your input's so very important. It's like, it's, there's a lot of options. There's nothing that, yeah, is, is really mandating that people discharged from the active duty are going to be taken care by the Veterans Administration unless they go through this process, you know, either that, or applying, right, for, for the benefits. But, but I think that the government of Guam, because we've decided we want to, and that was done, and through the efforts of, of those before me, the government of Guam has already decided it wants to know its veterans, and it wants to help them, and it's very clear in the law that that was the purpose, that not just to count numbers, but we want to know information. We want them to register. You wanted to know their home, their phone numbers, and their addresses, so that we could tell them what is available to them. If we have, like, when they passed the law regarding the license plates, that we could send them, in particular, those, you know, notice of that. And that's, that's some of the potential uses of the data. And so I was very excited when I met with the Veterans Affairs Director, Mrs. Snagustine, and Office of Technology, because, I mean, I was like, can you get this done in a day? Can you scan those existing DD-214s and put it into some program? So we don't really need to spend a lot of money on personnel to, to, you know, type these in, or extrapolate the data, can they just find a way to do that? So they're going to work on it. It was very preliminary at that point, but I'm hoping, I mean, I, I am sincerely hoping this is something that can be done quickly, and that just gives us a basis, right? It gives us a solid base, one that can't be disputed. We can dispute forever, you know, those, those, the edges of, you know, the accuracy of the data, but they don't do that in the states, you know? Why are we going to do that to ourselves? Just, what we just need is, is data, and we, everyone else can dispute that for us, but we just need to start, and we need to be able to outreach, and we need to be able to just, just bring what, hopefully, we can extrapolate from there. We can extrapolate, I think, I, I think, and I wanted to also say, so, in addition to the Office of Technology, I also talked to the Director of the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, and the person, Monica, in the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, who works with the census, right, to see if they could do this American Community Survey, which Mr. Kundif pointed out to me, it's being done in Puerto Rico. Well, they were very clear that that is, it's, it's a mandate of the census, it's kind of like how they do census in the different states, but they do not do that for territories. So the exception would be Puerto Rico, but, but they, they say, when they do the census on Guam, they do it every 10 years. And I hope I accurately convey what they said to me, they do it every 10 years, so we're, we're set for one in 2020. And there will be a few questions regarding veteran status, and so I'm sure you have seen these, but there's just a, a couple of questions. And I think it's, are you a veteran, and what period did you serve? But anyways, so Guam did have an opportunity to put in additional questions into its 2020 census, and so I thought, oh, perfect, we'll just put our questions into there. But according to the Bureau of Statistics and Plans, that avenue is pretty much closed, that the Census Department has already confirmed, they, they had a consultation, but they've already confirmed, Guam made requests for certain questions, but they've already confirmed which questions will be in the 2020 census. So we'll get a copy of that, and I'll go forward to everybody, and I'll put it into this committee report as well, what the questions will be in the 2020 census, especially those regarding veterans. And then, and then, so I asked him, well, why not? But it sounds to me like it's going to take the assistance of our Congresswoman, again, to get the ACS, expand it to Guam only. So they pointed me, you know, that, to me, that we should also look at Department of Labor's doing surveys regarding labor, employment, right? And of course, there are other things that, that are being done on Guam, that we could take all together and perhaps consolidate, and try to, then, then that's where the creativity comes in, what to do with all that information. So you've got Department of Labor information, you might have homeless count information, we might have our own, you know, outreach efforts, and then we've got these numbers from the other federal organizations, but, but where we could get data, and I agree, if ideally, we do our own survey, we don't leave it in the hands of, you know, and so we don't just get numbers, but we get the data that could really help them, or could really help us to provide the services that are not being provided, or that could additionally be brought here. So I just think there's a lot of potential. So I, I, I am not in any way by this bill trying to debate the merits of the registry. I thought that was already done, and we are all going to stay the course on getting this registry for our purposes on Guam. And, and I, I still think from all of you that, yeah, this, this one sentence in here that you want it taken out, I have no issue to take that out. If that's not accurate, I, like I said, I, I know where I got that, that's, that's not an issue for me, but I hope that you all continue to, I mean, if you could just clarify today, that whether you support Guam's continued pursuit of a registry for itself, that I'm thinking, if we do it right, would be, would be all-inclusive, as opposed to the exclusive Veterans Affairs Registry, and perhaps an exclusive, you know, CIBOC regist, you know, program. It's, it's bigger than that. It includes many people, the retired veterans, that who might not need any, any benefits right now from the Veterans Affairs, so they don't pursue that. And those, so I'm hoping it's going to be, I think that was the vision of the registry. I wasn't there when they did that, but I'm, you know, of course, I think that it was supposed to be bigger, and it's supposed to be useful, and it's supposed to be a direct link, to help our office, or, or whatever department we decide to stand up in Guam to be that direct link, right? I don't know, I, I can't see the potential of that, so I, I, I'm, I'm very grateful for your continued patience and your efforts in this regard. I just want to make sure. And Rev and Tax told me very clearly, they have no issue doing this, and they do it manually. They take copies, well, they said they would do it manually, because that's what they do for the Guam Election Commission, sensitive data. They have a very strict procedure to put the material and transfer the material. But I, I totally hear you about, you know, even in the states and the federal government, even the V, federal VA has been hacked, and the information is vulnerable. I'm afraid that's, that's going to be the case everywhere, despite our Office of Technology. I mean, that's their job, is to try to create this security procedure. So they understand that that's a huge task, and that the security is very, very, very important in this, for this type of information. So they, I think, understand that that is part of what they've been assigned as an agency of the government of Guam, is really to protect that. So I'm sure that, that, that they will work towards that. And I hear you about the other agencies too, because the law already says, the law that you helped put into place says, we want this registry, we want it now, we want it as fast as possible, and we want it as big as possible. And it says that every agency of the government of Guam, not just the Department of Revenue and Taxation, but every agency shall cooperate, right? And that, it actually says that the Veterans Affairs Director can go and request from the Department of Revenue and Taxation right now, a list of names of the people who are utilizing the benefits, and they should be able to go to any agency and get the information that they need from people who are, yeah, for their purposes. For the purposes of the registry, we've given them great authority. I was just trying to facilitate that, because we do have a change in directors, right, sometimes, and, and so we're not sure, one might be more aggressive than the other, but this would just make it a regular, regulated, and secure process of getting the data. If OTAC's involved, then hopefully, getting it securely, and like the Director said, permanent, no matter what happens, if the office burns down unfortunately, or anything else physically happens over there, that the, the data's secure, right? And for everyone. And so I, I, I don't object to this, some Tramor Landris or Gura, and hopefully, if we can get a process in place, and, and always in this bill, it says, the process will be dictated by the Office of Veterans Affairs, so that if they decide that the Department of Revenue and Taxation is not treating the confidential information as it should, then they can make rules and regulations, they can probably come up with a different procedure with OTAC, and, and it's kind of at their, their call. So, so hopefully, we can put our trust in them. And so, again, I want to thank all of you, and thank my colleagues for their questions and their, their concerns, and, and to the chairperson, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Vice. I only have a few comments actually to make, or questions to ask, and it's real simple. First comment is number one, under the Guam Code, five, Title V, Chapter 13, 31, 31, it talks about better customer service. It requires that every government agency, the first come, first served on the line, senior citizen, disabled, and then veterans. This bill, actually, I'd like to see it expanded a little bit more, but I like the intent of the bill. It supports the registry, like Mr. Condon brought up, it starts a conversation. I think we need to extend the conversation to include and require every agency, like Mr. Cruz brought up, anybody receiving any service, additional service because you're a veteran, you're required to provide the documents, like they're going to do at Revenue and Tax. Okay? And I think that will work perfectly, because even though there's other requirements like Mr. Condon brought up, that they recognize, you know what? I don't believe the United States government's going to say, well, we don't recognize who, wait a minute, we got a name, we got a warm body that received the service. We don't have a survey without a name? No, we have a name. That says a lot more than just the survey, okay? And I support that a lot more. I, I support the bill, but I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're able to expand it. The next note I'd like to make comment is that, I think, Mr. Snagustine, we had a conversation as the Vice Chair for Military Affairs with Senator Rodriguez, we ask you, and I know Mr. Condon was very concerned about is that establishing a Department of Veterans Affairs, not just an administrator, but a valid position with its personnel, because I know you, you've had some of your folks leave because of the pay, you know, when the, the, the VSOs, the, the people that write up the claims of veterans because of pay. And I think, well, I, we, Senator Rodriguez and I, actually are looking forward to see your proposed organizational chart, so that we can answer both Mr. Cruz and Mr. Condon's, and all the veteran concern is, how are you understaffed, and how are we going to fix it? Because Mr. Condon was very clear, over 100, 150 million, there's probably a lot more than that, because some of those numbers don't include the disability check that's non-taxable, that's floating in the economy here in Guam. There's a lot more money floating because of veterans, and Mr. Cruz vouched for that, what he gets in his, sometimes maybe even a lot more than what he got for his, his retirement and so forth, for everybody. But I'm just concerned about that, and I wanted to make sure that, that, that we get this, you know, Senator Rodriguez and I get this, so we can, we can push this bill, because I know there's, my colleagues will support it, because it's for the veterans, and we can, and we, and it'd be, put more strength in that office. And then we also mentioned to you, Mr. Snagustine, that, like Mr. Cruz brought up, PSAs, Public Service Announcement. I would recommend highly that you get with KGTF, they'll set up the broadcast, and I know you can communicate with every network out here, and it's actually provided for free. It's almost like what the Turn General's Office does, you know? They get on the air and they say, it's the law. You can say, it's a service for the, for the, our, the folks that have served us. And you can make that message, and it'll go out, maybe even weekly, becomes a monthly, it becomes routine, and then next you know, everybody that lands on Guam, I know the military network would accept that, PSAs, and that will just flood the market. Next you know, hopefully, we'll get your organizational chart, we can get you staff, identify the amount of property you need, because you know, Senator Tom Adda is also a veteran, he handles land, we can introduce the bill to transfer some property to the Department of Veterans Affairs, so you can get more, more, better foundation. And with that, you know, I, I didn't want to ask any questions, I didn't make that statement, and are, are we, are we good? Okay, Senator James wants to, Espada wants to throw one in. Not a problem. He's only got one question.
Only one.
And then we'll wrap it up.
Only one. And, and I'll allow any one of you to answer the question, and, you know, Mr. Cruz, in an article back in the Pacific Times, you mentioned that the, a previous administrator of the Guam Veterans Affairs and, and his team had a count of about 20, 22, 24,000 vets, but then that information kind of disappeared, and, and so we're, that's why we're starting from ground zero one more time. Mr. Snagustine, can you at least speak to that? Where did it go, or what happened, or was there any attempt to try to retrieve that information from the previous administrator?
Well, yeah, thank you for that, Senator. Not too sure where my partner at arms here, but, you know, as, as far as the number that was given previous to me arriving at that office, no good idea where they got it from.
Okay.
I, I am only speculating that a rough count of the files that we do have in our inventory was utilized for that number. But again, it's a very rough number. Now, I, I, I want to share this because, well, did, did that answer your question?
It does, but then it leads to a second question, because based on something you said today.
Sure.
You said that within your inventory, you, or you have huge files in your inventory.
That's correct.
I, I take it when you say files are not necessarily inputted into a, a, a database, or is it just records, I mean, paper kind of sitting there that needs to be inputted?
Actually, yes, files in filing cabinets of the individuals' DD-214 and information pertaining to that individual.
Any idea how many?
Well, I, I am, I am sharing this, that again, the 24,000 number arrived pretty much from there. Yesterday, I did ask one of... Yesterday, I did ask one of the folks that was doing filing within that one drawer, I said, do you think there's like 300 in here? And the individual goes, no, there's more than that.
Yeah.
Okay, but in saying that, I want to share this, that, you know, the numbers that we're talking about, local numbers, federal numbers, the local numbers that we're actually getting for our registry, just with the VA. A year ago, I attended a director's conference in DC, and very similar issues are being encountered with other states and territories as well of what we're seeing here in Guam. My philosophy, and I told them, I don't care what their issues are in the states, what I care for is the issue here at home. Because in the states and DC, if you walk down the sidewalks, there's all kinds of pharmacies and all kinds of resources that we don't have here at home. So I want to say this because we're out here in the middle of the ocean. While I appreciate everything that the federal government is doing for us and our veterans, I think that we should continue to fight for equal resources and equal services. So by seeing these numbers that are numbers of the local, this will then allow me to go back out during the outreaches and say, listen, we need to get you all in the system, because this is clear that the number of the 15,000, 20, 24,000 that we're talking about, the reason why it's not in the system, because you all have not registered. It's clear, just by the numbers I'm seeing. So what we're doing is really going to be for a good cause in the long haul. And we cannot lose focus on that. We need to continue to move forward with this bill.
Thank you. There being no one else to testify.
Senator, can I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
I think this will resolve everything. Some, one of you three may be able to do a resolution to our delegate, and then our delegate can introduce it in Congress. And that is, before an individual gets out of the military, they automatically register six months before they get out. That's it.
Okay, so you're asking DOD to dictate that? I don't know. I understand where you're coming from, but...
I brought that up to Senator Urano, or something like that, Urano, from Honolulu, and she likes that suggestion. There's nothing wrong with us making a resolution, saying it to our Congresswoman, then have the Congresswoman suggest that to the military or to whoever to ensure that our veterans would automatically register before they leave the military.
Okay, okay, be required to automatically register.
Excuse me?
I think we can work something out. I'll get with my other colleagues, and we'll come up with some verbiage on how to work that with Congresswoman Madeline Burdally. Because, you know, as a veteran myself, if I've served my country and I see something, Rodney Cruz looking like, wait a minute, don't tell me more, what more you want me to do when I already said, thank you, and I left. If you want me to register, I'd follow the DD 214. I got my options, as long as it's a choice by order by DOD. You know, Mr. Conrad, you know where I'm coming from, but I know where you're coming from also. We'll work it, we'll see how we can write that verbiage. May not necessarily be a resolution, maybe a letter signed by all the colleagues asking Madeline. Because sometimes resolutions can be very, very, it could cause some misunderstanding. So I think the verbiage has to be just written correctly. And I know the two, my two colleagues, these are both attorneys. I just want to be very careful about how we want, but I know where you're coming from. And I'll get a few, Bill.
Yeah, you know.
Okay?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. The committee will continue to receive testimonies for the next few days, which is by Friday. Please address your written testimony to the Committee on Education, Finance, and Taxation and submit it via email to senatorjosanaugustin@gmail.com. My office located at Rand Care Building on Second Floor, Suite 3, 761 South Marine Corps Drive, in Muning, Guam, 96931. Si tu es marseillaise for your attendance and participation in today's hearing. And for those at home, thank you for watching. Have a nice day.